It's two thirty, the meeting will come to order. Call to order.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunting. Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George, can we get you to pray for us?
Your biopence, please.
Most gracious heavens, Father, we come to a meeting this time to discuss our hiring of our new administrator, Father. And we ask that your our minds would be open and receptive to the things that we can communicate about in this meeting. And that we would do things that would be pleasing unto you, for which is name we pray amen.
Say that, Judge.
When the intention of the land of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I actually started the lead.
I just don't think you can have it over.
Okay.
Okay, no public comment, looks like. Approval of the agenda. By George.
By.
Steve to approve the agenda, which has one item on it. All those in favor, say aye. Osnay and motion carried. Here is you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my pleasure in the presence of Commissioner Minister Bailey to assist and work with you to hire your next administrator. This is the first step in the process. We hope the process today has given some information about the community, about the organization, what we're looking for your next manager, and what kind of challenges and opportunities are out there for the next person. All so that we can first advertise it, so that it's realistic advertisement of the position. And second, we as the applications committee can basically look at what you're looking for and what the person is applying as to offer. And hopefully that sort of post matches, so that would match the community with the skill set that we come up with. I did spend some time with your, like, several of your, like, department staff. And I actually get input from them on the same things I want to get from you. I'm going to take this information and put it together and you'll see what was offered by the staff and what info. Right here, I will use that information, put together the profile, which will see comments, kind of long test. Those are your comments regarding these four topics and what they've set up there. So it's just helps me and the way to identify kind of a little attractive of the organization. So first thing I would start with real quickly, sort of as a workbook, if you want to look at it this way, is the community of Grasha County. If you just give me a couple of things that what stands out to you, the county, this is the area, why people live here, what they like about it, things that might happen, just a couple of things that you feel are, you know, make this place an enjoyable, Grasha County enjoyable place to live. So, and this is kind of like, you tell me on the rundown.
Rural.
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 Okay.
Agriculture.
Okay.
Out of eighty-three counties in Michigan, I think we rank fourth in agriculture production.
So.
We rank fourth in agricultural production.
Okay.
In the state.
Oh, the state, okay. What state were? Good. Nice question, though. It's about the year, just again, this is one of the fun facts. Fun fact, Center is the geographic center of the Lord. My name's St. Louis.
Yep.
Is that it?
Okay. Yeah, St. Louis is the actual geographical center.
Geographical center, St. Louis being the exact geographic.
I happen to live just a few steps from the.
From the monument, exactly. It was literally across the street from it.
I used to own a restaurant, I tell everybody to go while they're waiting for their pizza, walk down to the park, there's a spot there, and you can stand there and you're in the exact middle.
Middle East.
There you go. Now let's cross the street.
I think it's a, I think it's always been a family oriented county. There's a lot of history here, there's families that have been here for hundreds of years, I mean.
They've got very good schools, every school in the county is a good school. I mean, we send our kids off and they do great. Excellent.
So I have a little pick on something just to say, I'm so, you know, I'm gonna pick on you on this one. What would you like to add?
Well, I think manufacturing, there's a pretty good variety, except Avalon Tahoe, I think worldwide is like.
That's Grasha County's largest, with the exception of the school system. School systems have the most people. But as far as manufacturing goes, they're the largest manufacturer, yeah.
Yeah, Avalon.
Right.
Globally, they're like the third or fourth.
Yeah.
Big.
We have a college in our, in our county. Alma College.
Little liberal arts.
Anything else?
Well, we have a couple of lakes and a river, a lot of recreational opportunities, a couple of nice parks.
Three rivers, two that can be used recreationally, and two manmade lakes that are, because Half Moon's also manmade, isn't it? Or is that one natural?
Natural, that's the natural lake, if you can call it that.
Okay. Rainbow Lake.
Never called.
Rainbow Lake, which is a private lake, but it is manmade, but it is, I mean, it's five mile long Rainbow Lake.
Yes, it's a reservoir, it's like, yeah.
It's a reservoir, yeah.
Damned up Pine Creek, I think.
It says Avalon Tahoe is the third largest globally for making. That's significant.
Yes.
Avalon Tahoe is the third largest globally for making pontoon boats.
Pontoon boats. There was on.
Over Nellma.
On the right down.
Right in the heart of the city, it's like the city has developed all the way out, so.
Okay, so next we'll move to the organization of the county. This is, I'm talking about everything that makes our county government, could be the employees, could be the county, or whatever the case might be. So what can you tell me about the organization? I mean, for instance, you have five county commissioners, not, not all counties are set up with five county commissioners, some may have more. I think five is.
Five is the minimum.
Five is number three, but.
Maybe like T-1 or something.
Yeah.
No, they get back.
Just come to mind, we're saying county government here, and that may be a little different than if you go to the Michigan Association of Counties and they go, oh, that's different, we don't really have this.
I think we have a good mix, I mean, Jan is in her twenty-fifth year.
Okay.
Of being a commissioner, George is in his thirteenth year. And you've been, this is the first year that would come. And then you're in your third, right, Tim and Dave?
Third year.
I'm in my seventh year.
I think a nice thing about Grasha County is our police force, Alma and St. Louis have merged, so they can do more and get around better. And also Ithaca, their police and this, and the sheriff's office have merged, so you actually.
You have two, two merged police departments that.
Yeah.
That's good.
That helps to get, because we have a big county, it's really early, so this way.
So I guess what I would say with that is it sounds like local governments work predeveloped.
Right.
Because that's not always the case, some cases, you know, when people are at odds or, you know, they're, you know, they're in competition, you know, whatever the case.
That's working really, really well together.
Okay.
I don't think St. Louis and Alma officially merged yet, have they?
Oh, they're working on it.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, I know that's running together, but I don't.
Okay, so we got, we got.
Well, you got, you know, the county and the city have a contract together, and that's a healthy contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
The county contract, I think the contracts of the county. I don't find it, it's a merger, it's a county.
Okay, so it's a contract. Okay, so we have one merged and one managed.
Mm-hmm.
That's all about that, they had the one that saw contracts that they had to go, this department had merged. They had, they had.
Fourteen years ago or something.
Yeah.
Two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, that's.
Twelve.
Something about.
Just blended in.
Together. And I know some of you, probably Phil Moore, okay, so Phil, we gotta put together this coalition to get all the windmills in. You know, that was a feat in itself, and, you know, and somehow that, that didn't start out with your company, or it did start with your company, right?
So. He was the one that really started.
Yeah.
And with the, the wind turbines, where they started over there, but they came here through the help of.
Nation to get all the ordinances, the townships.
Right.
Money to buy into.
Right.
Which again, shows a level that, kind of the county and the township and the city governors are willing to work together, which is good. But then.
One of the few counties that has a master plan, and we'll be talking about that in our regular meeting tonight.
Okay.
That, that requires every township and every city to be a part of that master plan. So that's unusual in today's world to get them all together.
It was coming in one.
Yep.
Includes, includes.
Yep.
Okay.
Every township.
Anything else about the organization, level of services?
Well, we've recently taken over the airport, so it's strictly a county airport now.
Wasn't the private non-occupancy for them?
Uh, no, it actually was a. It was in charge, long story, but Elmo, the city of Elmo operated the airport for about fourteen years, fifteen years, due to constraints in them.
Actually, what happened, the airport was originally in Alma. And because they wanted it outside of Alma, that's when they moved it out, outside of Alma. And then there was Pine River and the county, and two other townships, or this, the county, it would have been the county. And I believe Alma and. And they, they were all together, but after a while, some of them dropped out because of the economy.
Okay.
And so it left it down to where it was just the county and Alma that went together.
Two thousand, two thousand eight is when everything went slow. Our county here was actually so, so bad that we were actually having to furlough people in the county because we couldn't afford it anymore.
Right.
And that's when, that's when it was, it was a, it was a venture between the county and the city of Elmo. But then that county couldn't participate anymore, so they changed it to an authority. The authority then was run basically through the city of Elmo. And it had participants, the city of Ithaca, Arquita Township, Pine River Township, and Breckenridge were all the members of that board. And then a few years ago, it became harder and harder for them to, to operate. And so we thought it was that we just take it back.
Okay, you'd mentioned, I think an important part, you'd mentioned something about taxes, taxation. I mean, obviously this county was certainly known as being fairly tight, you know what I mean? Or not tight, but we didn't, we're strapped with what you brought up about windmills. We now have four hundred seventeen windmills and five different wind farms. And we've recently, this year, two solar farms have gone online, and they're building a third right now. So with that has been, and Ryan can probably know the numbers better than I do, but with that, you bring a lot of tax revenue to the county that has definitely made a little bit of breathing room, if you will, for us to expand the services that you're actually asking about. I mean, I think for rural county, we provide a lot of services, I mean, beyond, you know, there, but there's what, one hundred and fifty employees in this building now or something of that nature? I mean.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we have a lot of things that we do offer here, and.
We have parks that are really.
Yeah, we have awesome parks.
Park. And they're free to our county residents.
Those are funded through a millage, we have a wonderful commission on aging that's also funded through a millage for, or, do you know how many meals they do deliver weekly? It's a lot.
It's a lot, I know.
It's a lot of meals.
Two thousands of meals a year.
So.
I'll get Ryan about the special villages that you have.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's good. Which obviously, but I'm gonna go through these after we kind of through this. You know, but it could be, it's going to make me now looking at the actual position really. And the first thing I'd like to talk about, before we get into the ideal candidate, is the, what do you want to say regarding the salary? And on that note, our staff put together a selected list of.
Ryan, I thought you said people were willing to do this job for free.
Lining up.
I don't know where you heard that. Takes them out of my mouth.
And I know Ryan had told me that he had kind of mentioned a third and hope, but in, in this, so you can see the listing of counties on the left. You know, ideal from a population standpoint, Grasha, there's fares there, and of course, you know, they vary some. And then from a vantage point for tax, and finally taxable value, percentage, that sort of thing. But generally, kind of what to look at here is the median, and the average, kind of just looking at the median. There, you can see that this is now salary range, and the salaries are fitting in between those, one twenty-five and one forty-five. Uh, per year is, is what came out of this study. And there is, in those are human premises, this is a bit of a logical. You know that salary is a factor, I mean, it, it shouldn't be the only factor in terms of what, what was in track candidates. Obviously, a good fifth of my habit, everything else, but certainly one of those things, as, and both Ryan and I have spent a career in local government, when there's a job posted, if it's, if, if it's less than you're making an hour in a job, uh, it's not gonna, you know, you're not, you're gonna have way less interest unless you have someone of the reason to take the job or at least apply. So I throw that out there, you know, then to, I, when, when I talk to candidates, it's a, part of the process here is that I'm gonna spend, those qualified candidates, I'm gonna spend time, probably an hour or talking to them at a phone interview after they apply. And I sort of real quick that, you know, this is the salary that's being offered in the salary range. Is this acceptable? Because if it's not, then you're wasting my time, their time, and your time if you decide to interview. So there is, you know, I would say this is less and less the case these days, but there is sort of a mentality that says, well, I'll go in, you know, you know, a year ago, once they decided they want to hire me, then I'm gonna argue for more salary.
Negotiate.
No. Negotiations, there's a ton of negotiations, but it generally is about how much vacation time am I gonna get? So, you know, that sort of thing, because I've worked twenty years and, you know, I don't want to kind of starting vacation, but salary is salary. And again, there are other dollar costs and things, but when it comes to salary, I really hold me in. This is the salary, don't expect any more, if it's a range, you know. What they mad about a range is, and, you know, most people look at it and go, well, you know, I like the top of that range. Now, that's where negotiating comes in. If you list a range, which is, is good, because if somebody comes in and they don't have as much experience as somebody else that does, you could offer higher, you know. And some of the folks have gone through this process in the past, but you know, I don't want to talk to you with that. And to advertise a position, I'd like to get a consensus from you folks as to what the, what you would expect and be willing to pray for qualified candidate. So it looks like the one twenty to one forty is sort of in the, you know, that doesn't mean you can't advertise something less than that. But it's just that, like everything else, kind of what's going on, salaries are increasing faster than the cost of inflation.
Yeah. Significant.
And they have moved pretty quick.
You can't always go, well, we paid the last person this, because I actually had somebody who said, tell me, you know, we gotta hire somebody in, and he was saying, well, he didn't need that. Then while we're paying the person that gets another job, who had more experience, because that's what this is telling you that, you know, the person that we want.
We aren't gonna get anybody to apply for this job if we advertise for what we're paying him, bottom line, we ain't gonna get anybody with the shit in the out, apply for this job. We aren't gonna, Grasha County's not like on the ocean or the lake or something, we're, we are smack dab as far away from all that as you can get.
Yes.
So there's nothing that's the draw, like, oh, I'm living in Traverse City and all that, we don't have that, okay?
There are the things, I guess, just to balance that, the cost of living.
Absolutely, there's, there's, but most people don't.
Right.
Think of that firsthand, so. I mean, to be honest with you, I was fully expecting that, before our little embezzlement issue that came about, that we were gonna have to give the guy we had a very significant pay raise just to justify keeping them around. So I liked your one twenty number, but I don't like the one forty, forty-five at the top end. I think if you start there and maybe shoot a smaller range. But to get to that top range, you're gonna have to come here with some experience, true knowledge of what it means to run a county or a, you know, a larger municipality. I'm not gonna, you know, I don't want somebody who ran a six hundred. You know, resident's village and think that, you know, they did that for three years and they're gonna know how to run a county, because it's vastly different. You know, you ran a very diverse, large township, big difference from running a very small municipality. So, you know, as long as we have somebody, I, I would like to start at that one twenty, I just don't know where I want to put that top number at. I think one twenty is gonna get people to go, I'm interested, you know what I mean? People who are.
I mean, you can do one twenty to one thirty, and you can say starting salary. So kind of doesn't say anything other than it implies that maybe with good performance, it'll go, it can go higher than, it doesn't guarantee it. Okay, so I like, you know, starting salary and then a range.
Yeah.
The other comment I have about that is experience is key.
Yes.
And city government, maybe dealing with Mary Ann, she had a funny, she's seen a lot of things here that are unique to her that she didn't understand about county government, just some of the federal money passed through and the court system, it's just a little bit different animal. And this is kind of, just from a scan I did some time ago, you looked at some of the assistant administrator types. I think you get, you know, if they're working in a larger county, you know, it's really gains of knowledge.
Yeah.
Uh, if you hire into that range, would probably be of more interest than one of them than the, because a lot of them are making one twenties, one thirties right now.
Already as an assistant somewhere else.
I just, I can't.
Well, that's why I wanted you in here.
Document that.
No, but that's, I mean, it makes sense to me, hell, I, I mean, you guys I worked with that are, you know, I, I look at, I left six years ago, this month I retired. My position today, what I used to have to work a crazy amount of overtime to get to my goal, they exceed that by ten grand, and that's their salary.
Base, yeah, I just.
So, and that's just, that's their everyday salary now. Give up every weekend and holiday to get that.
Clint's not on this list, I'm pretty certain, his, the deputy there, who's been there five, six years now, maybe, I don't know, I never have talked to him about it, but I think he's in the mid-one twenties there somewhere, one twenty-eight seems like, but I think to make it off seventy or something, you know.
You know, and that's.
I just, if you wanted someone with a background, it's a deputy somewhere to come.
Some experience, yeah.
Midland County, they're in a hundred eighty-seven.
Is the, once a person comes out, it's very difficult to give them more than a cost of living increase. Because, and I know we have five or six unions here.
Because everybody else don't want the same piece of pie.
And so they look at it and go, well, if you can afford to give, you know, your mystery of seven percent or ten percent, so they're coming in high, but they're not gonna keep getting bumped up unless you do some kind of a salary survey or something out of the ordinary, they're gonna get two or three percent of it.
But we just went through one of those, so we shouldn't be doing one of them anytime soon, we shouldn't, completed that.
I would say the contrarian view of that, though, just for.
Yeah.
I face some of that, and there's only one of that position.
Yes.
There's dozens of some of these other unions.
Yes.
And if you tie your lead guy to this union stuff.
You'll never.
While you're, by being willing to break away from that, that lets the folks know, these unions.
But you write it into the contract.
Well, I agree, it's the same thing, we.
Then they know who's in charge.
I don't know why anybody runs elected positions, I don't know.
That's because.
The responsibility.
So they can't come back and say, well, we just gave them, no, it's, we hired the person who said, in the contract, this is what they're all supposed to.
Thanks.
But we put it in the contract that they.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Then you've got it, and nobody says, oh, that's in the contract, I mean, they are sharing contracts.
Yes.
Okay, there was a contractual obligation, we haven't started, but you base it on performance and, you know, and, and maybe some range, salary increase, but you get away from all that. So I do have a combat.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, it's part of the contract, which is putting, you know, things up, so.
Well, that's what we're hanging on you and your expertise when we draw this kind of, when we actually create and finalize this contract, is that's the kind of like boilerplate I want in there. Because I don't really want to hear, you know, that, oh my God, yeah, well, there's twenty-four of you in there, some of you are worth what you get paid and some are here. You know what I mean, I'm, they're all listening, I don't care, you know what I mean? People know, absolutely, if you've got a good administrator, if you've got a good administrator who's worth their weight, you gotta keep them, and you gotta keep them here, because, like I said, we're, we're not the mecca of, of a lot of things here. It's a wonderful community, I love living here, I drove ninety miles round trip to live in this community for twenty-five years. And however, I had family ties digging me in here. An administrator that probably is gonna come in here from somewhere else, isn't going to have those roots necessarily, possibly, but not necessarily. And so we gotta make sure they want to stay working in Grasha County for some length of time, whether it'll be as long as you stayed at Clint.
Well, we'd like them forever, but we need them for at least five.
Yes, exactly, I was thinking that same thing, you could plant some.
Any questions? In the interview process, we'll ask a moment.
I don't want to go in two years, I'm out of here.
I don't want an eighteen-month marvel.
You can't commit them to that, but you got a feeling with.
Right, yes. You could, yeah. So starting salary range.
Well, Ryan threw his hand in my sandbox.
I didn't mean to throw your hand in there, but that's the, if you're looking at what some of the deputies are making, and you think you might pull someone of that caliber, with that background, then.
So do we jump to one thirty as the start, or do we just put one thirty as the, our salary, and don't put a range? Because you said you can put a number out.
Yeah, starting salary.
Yeah.
And I think.
But if they gotta relocate, a hundred, people are gonna relocate for two grand plus more headaches.
Well, that's why you go range.
Oh, yeah.
We're in contracts where you can offer, sweeten that pot with moving them.
Yes, we got other negotiating.
Absolutely, I'm saying, yeah, oh, it can do a lot of things to help that out.
Yes. Yeah.
I know the mayor clinic paid for a brand-new college graduate to move to, like, holy crap.
They sweeten the pot, because that's, that's what it takes to get. But the thing of it is, people, it's not on the books, it doesn't keep carrying on.
No, it's one and done, kind of.
Perpetuity, it just, it stops.
So I heard much playing one thirty.
Yeah, one.
Looking at thirty, start at one thirty.
Just do a one thirty.
With option, like you said, put into the contract that.
Yeah, and as long, that's something we don't have to put any agree or any, but as long as I know that there's some discussion here, I can relay that. I can relay that as I'm talking to the candidates, there are strong candidates. That, you know, that the expectation is that, you know, the salary, you know, that there's gonna be salary increases and this.
I would assume you're gonna have, we're gonna be in contact with you, Rich. We're, you know, you're gonna be.
I'm gonna ask you.
We're interested at one thirty.
Is this what they're making? Is this what people are making from there?
Yeah, that will be after you.
Yeah. That's what I want. Cause I don't want you to be.
What I'm saying is that.
I wanna lose the good guy.
More than all of these. I think that's what I do.
Yeah, I was just.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Fine.
Um, what is your range though?
One twenty, one forty. That was before.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, that was the range I. Did that memo when we was.
I couldn't.
And they would set, I said they would set the range. I.
Yeah.
I mentioned that range though, it's kind of a.
So do we wanna go higher to the one twenty to one forty range?
One twenty, one forty. You would know that.
Well, I know, but he's the one that just talked himself around us. Well, he's the one that just told us that actually put in the, in that initial memo.
The memo that's not sent to the board.
It's gonna be what.
And as long as I know that somebody's gonna have to walk on water to get one forty. Okay. I mean, we can, you know. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you're willing to pay it to the person that really has your credentials. Then I guess I would put it in there as long as, you know, and I can say, hey, you know, if you, with your salary, don't expect one forty. Or with your.
Experienced.
Are you still interested?
Mm hmm.
I can be very frank on the phone. I mean, I.
Between you and that other person, so you can say a lot.
Yes. So if you're comfortable with that, we can go with one.
Man, what are we paying the guy across the street?
One thirty, seven, eight.
I mean, the guy running Greater Gresham's making a hundred and forty grand, one thirty, seven, eight. And you're running the whole county. He's running. Something that if it went away tomorrow, I'm not sure it'd affect the county at all.
I think salaries have went up. There's no question.
Yeah, that's my point. And I'm not, not taking anything away from him, but. We have to have an administrator in the county. We proved that, cause. If, nobody paid attention what the hell happened from January to May. It was a shit show. Around here. So. Um, we can't be without one, but.
But we don't wanna be with anyone.
We don't, yes, you know what I mean? But I'm saying that. We have a. A tax funded position. That is non-essential. Truly. That makes one thirty, seven, eight, or one thirty, eight, seven, or whatever it is.
Whatever. It's right in that range.
So. When you look at it in that perspective. Um. You know. We need to make sure that our administrator, the person that's in charge of running the whole thing. Is thoroughly compensated. I mean, that's, that's my point in all this is. Um. I had no idea there was fifty thousand dollar discrepancy between what our administrator made and what. Somebody else was making. I mean, even what our old administrator was making to the court administrators, the prosecutor, I mean, all these people were light years ahead of them. And. That was a, a concern of mine. So it's not that way in most other counties. Guaranteed if you put them all up, this thing.
Steve, you gotta remember across the street, he's been here for a long time.
I respect that. I respect that. But that's why I'm saying like you had mentioned. After Ryan about going to one forty is a possibility there, but you get somebody who's got, comes in with twenty years of experience. At a county government.
That's what I said.
We gotta be willing to, we gotta be willing to.
No, I mean, you say, we're talking about not starting with the range.
Are you, you're talking about not starting?
No, I'm talking about a range.
Yeah.
Yeah. Necessarily that, that's.
We had talked, you wrote down originally one twenty to one thirty.
Right.
But should we? I'm asking.
Twenty two.
You did that? Okay, we're still discussing. From your experience. Are there people that. Might take a little pay cut from their present job be, because. They're either unhappy where they were, or they just want a new challenge. Setting the.
Yeah, it's generally, they'd be wanting to make a lateral. Something close.
A lateral.
Lateral, meaning, you know, if you're one twenty now, they might, you know, they might go, if, if there's a reason. For them. But, but generally speaking, they're, you know, if they're gonna be selling a house and doing those other, you know, the things if they own a house.
Their life, they're not gonna go.
Yeah, they're, they, they probably aren't going to make that. I mean, once in a while, if somebody's from this area. And they wanna come back.
Mm hmm.
You know, that's, you know, that, that might be the case. It might be, I don't know, but.
So we're pretty much agreement to one twenty to one forty?
That works for me. That'll work for me.
It works for me.
We're gonna grab the bull by the orange.
How you, Tim, does that work for you?
So the other thing related to this and, uh, is. Wha- what kind of experience, cause we already talked about county versus non-county. So I would say hardware experience. Uh, number years type. And then what kind of education? I mean, is it, you know, there's a person. And it can be, uh, desired. Degree or required degree or preferred. I mean, sort of desired and preferred are. Are sort of two of the same thing. But required is a different animal, because if you're required versus a bachelor's degree of saying. Uh, the sciences or, you know, counting, um.
Public administration is what I'm looking for.
They don't have, they're not gonna get moved here. Now, there are, and is, you know, there, there are cases where, and you could put in there, ten years of experience will, without a degree. If a person say went through and never got their degree and went to college. And there are people that took a bunch of courses and never got a degree, but one way to get kind of.
Are you saying ten years of experience as an adminis- in an administrative field?
Yes.
But I'm, okay.
Yeah, but it's all.
Have ten years.
The, the smaller you make the funnel, these are the requirements.
Right.
The fewer people that are. Needed. Okay, so, uh, but yeah, you wanna announce that was what you think is needed. For the person to be successful here too. So you, you know, you know, so I have no experience and, you know, the, the obvious thing that isn't, you know.
During.
Maybe there were no experience and no, and, and, uh, in government, you know, degree, well, you know, we get a thousand applicants. But they're not gonna be successful.
Would you word it like desired or preferred, but that doesn't mean it has to be.
Yes.
The degree in public administration or. Years.
Also CPA.
Yes, I think accounting, CPA, any of those kind of things. You know, open that window or that funnel a little wider, I think.
Yeah, so a four year degree, you think that's, uh. In, in the right field, is that a requirement?
Well, yeah.
My opinion is.
I think so. Yeah.
Required. So a four year degree, and I'll build in. You know, the. The business account.
I'm looking, I'm looking for somebody that's got twenty-five years of wisdom and a thirty-year-old body.
Thirty-five-year-old.
Five years of wisdom and a thirty-year-old body.
I'd like to be five years minimum. And, uh. Local government, lo- local government management. And I know, uh, actually in a previous, there was discussion about, you know, counties versus.
There's a lot of municipalities in county government. I found that out a lot.
So here's, here's my take on it. I think. That, and now here's Ryan as an example. Is that he came out of township government. Uh, which is a different animal than a city manager in the city. In a lot of ways, but one of the newer, uh, uh. Ways that the experiences, you're dealing with a lack of department heads.
Right.
Barrier loss. Okay, so, uh, that is a smoother transition. Now, I'm not arguing that county experiences are good. But if you take a city manager, then everything runs through the management. You know, no one can do anything without the manager approving it. And you stick that kind of, uh, experience into the county, well, you gotta work with everybody.
Be very frustrating.
It would be. So, uh, that's why I say, they just say local government management.
Mm hmm.
Uh, that includes township administrators.
Mm hmm.
That includes county administrators. And maybe the right personality out of city manager of the city might work, cause we're there some.
Yeah.
The guy had, uh, that went to Ottawa, Ottawa County.
Right.
Went from city manager to Ottawa County assistant and then Ottawa County, and now he's back in city management. So it can be done, but it takes the right individual to do that. So I'd say. Uh, as a starting point, finders experience. And local, in local government management. Uh. As, as, uh, that's a minimum.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
That's a minimum.
That's a minimum.
That's a minimum.
That's a minimum. So, does that sound good?
Sounds great to me.
Okay. So four year degree plus. Five years local government. Management.
Close to your thirty-year-old body there.
Yeah.
We're too getting too old to train managers. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So. Uh, talking about, what are you looking for in your vice manager? In either, in skill wise or personality in any of those, just tell me what, what you're looking for. And I think you started off the whole thing by saying something.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need somebody that's a strong leader, that's got. I don't know how you politically correct write this. I want somebody that's got a set of balls or intestinal fortitude if it's a woman. You know what I mean? That's what I'm talking about. I want somebody who is willing to step up and do the job. And, you know, that's, I'm not the most politically correct person, but you can use intestinal fortitude then. But you gotta be able to do. You gotta be able to make tough decisions when tough decisions have to be made. And not worry about.
Strong personality.
So that, that's.
And the viewing public just writes your letters to Steve Saps.
So now we're gonna pull this, it's killing personality tree. Strong leader, but your personality has to be one of the strong leader ones. So you got experience as a strong leader. And you've got the wherewithal to be a strong leader.
Thank you. That's a very nice, eloquent way of saying what I wanted to say, not say it.
We need someone with vision.
Vision. Right?
Moving forward. I really believe you're not moving forward, you're gonna die. Absolutely. Also, I'd like to have someone that possibly has some airport experience. We do have an airport. We are the airport authority.
Okay.
Well, that will help in that area.
Well-rounded.
And what does personality go on there? So maybe I'm saying.
Uh, you know, if something new, unexpected comes, they're not rattled. They. They're able to handle it and think through it and. Come to a logical way.
Common, common demeanor. It's gonna be okay.
Well, an old common sense.
Which is, that went, that went on, that went on four or five years ago.
Good sense now.
Steve, what's that?
Good sense.
Good sense now? It's not common anymore?
Yeah.
Senseless.
Yeah.
Common sense is not anymore.
I'm still thinking. I would like to see someone. I don't know. Let me think about this.
Community oriented.
Community. It's a good one. That's a good one.
So one of the, uh, this actually came up in the last conversation.
I don't know how to say this. I'd like to see somebody.
Well, I have a question, say, um. How do you expect to, uh. How are you gonna become involved in the community, something that affects? You know, and that drives to where you live? How, how active are you gonna be? What are you gonna be active in? And that sort of thing. So we'll get to that in the questions of the people that are choosing.
Um. I think even though we're in the process of trying to find a, oh. Financial. Yeah. Somebody with some strong finance background or, or knowledge.
Well, that would help financially, because it's, it's gonna take two people.
Absolutely.
It'll take two people and one knowing how the other one should work.
And vice versa.
Yes. If you know what I mean.
That's exactly, that's why I, I think that's vitally important that.
Yeah, you're.
That's imbalance and that's.
That's incorrect about.
I'd like to see somebody that is easygoing, very pleasant, but yet has a strong personality. And doesn't, not easily led. I don't know if you would wanna put that. So what kind of person is that?
Easily swayed.
Not easily swayed.
Good answer.
I feel that's kind of telling how I am. Easygoing, but not easily swayed.
I think, uh. Terms of skills is most first hand. And, and I guess you can think in the name of, I guess, think back, you know, something you've been out here all the time. Uh, things you wish they were the previous people who had known something about.
Good listener and good communicator.
Okay.
Someone that's good with technology. Capable of using it.
It's a good one.
Transparency.
That's really a good one.
Conspiracy, yeah. So let me just flush it out a little bit. Cause that's kind of a buzzword, but are you talking about reporting to your folks or, and, and so keeping you abreast of what's going on?
Transparency goes.
Yeah.
You know, basically go across the board. I mean, you're working with people. You gotta be honest with them. They've gotta know that what you're saying is good for them and good for the county. That type of thing. And also obviously, Board of Commissioner needs to know what's going on.
Okay, yeah.
Last thing I wanna know is walk out in the street and say, did you know?
So what's, what is your preference in terms of your link, uh, weekly reports? You do like, uh, a phone call, you like, you all use email, so, uh, Ryan can send out, send out, hey, we just had something happen here. Everybody should know about it.
We have a reporter twice.
Well, yeah, but if something, I think he's telling us something happens in between what we do.
So twice a month.
Yeah.
And I think if something happens and as far as I'm concerned, the county.
Need to know what.
Gets a hold of the board chair.
Yeah.
Let the board chair disseminate that information. That's what board chairs do.
The guy's gotta be honest.
Okay, so on the speed of.
This. Let's not go through. It's gotta be honest.
Well.
Yeah, of course you don't know that.
I was gonna say, up until, up until that. Yeah, I, I'm not sure how you say this, but one of the things that I've, uh. Heard mentioned is that. They need to tell you what you need to know and not what they think you wanna hear.
Right, exactly.
I don't know how you phrase that, but.
Yeah.
Taking sugarcoat things, well, you know, we're doing okay.
No, but you.
Really.
All of a sudden go, what happened?
Can't give you good advice if we don't know what's happening.
Okay.
And before.
Um, anything else before? Well, first thing is, somebody mentions, we had challenges and opportunities. So. This is like, what's the person, you know, what are some of the hot potato items that you're gonna come across? You know, what are some of the hot potato items that you're gonna come across? Uh, the person's desk in the first year, they're there, they're kind of been out there. Uh, but you know, maybe you don't have a clue of that.
One of the big things I think is tax revenue, because I think. Everybody has this persona that we have four hundred seventeen windmills and, but those are declining in value. Until they, some of them have bottomed out at twelve years. This is where they're gonna stay now. But without a foreseeable thing to repower them or bring them back up to a higher level. We're never gonna get back to that level. Um. Just this year, we brought on a very large solar farm. But it looks really rosy when you see how much tax revenue that brought in, but when you calculate in all those that went down. You got what, a three hundred thousand dollar difference, right? Or something of that nature. I mean, it's not, but you're thinking three million and well, it's not three million.
It was thirty million.
Or thirty million, sorry.
The balance of that class of property declined enough due to the first of the classification and depreciation.
Yeah.
That. All that total balance went negative or dropped.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, so it's a long range forecast, you know, or just.
That's what I want, is somebody who's.
You gotta be, gotta be looking at two years ahead.
Yeah, they gotta have some foresight of where, you know, and it. Right now, we're just gonna be starting contract negotiations. This is the kind of information I need to know on those things. Solar, you know, paying thirty million dollars, but the property values dropped more than thirty.
In that class of property.
Personal property.
Personal property. That's gonna be in the budget next time, not this week, but the next beginning this month.
It's gonna be a. I mean, I don't wanna, but that that is something, somebody has to have that foresight to go, they gotta sit down and go. Okay, as we go into this, you know, we have to be mindful of that.
We have funds today, but are we gonna have funds?
So, yeah, I mean, just you.
Proper plan.
That that is, you know, don't hire a bunch of people that you have to keep paying for.
Yeah, you need to be sure.
Buildings, roads, uh, buying new equipment. So that, you know, you.
A lot of toys, now you can't ford around.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, it's there in there. That's good. So, okay, tax revenue, that's uh, very, very important.
Green, green energy is gonna be a topic.
Okay. So is that an opportunity? Is it, is it, is that an, because then. One of the things that happens when you kind of look at challenges and opportunities, some challenges are actually opportunities.
They're both, yeah.
They're both.
Yeah.
So what about green energy? Okay, that's obviously the uh, solar power.
Yeah, the big wind turbine.
Yes. And what the future is? So you talk about the future for you?
Yeah, yeah, have knowledge of that.
Okay.
When you have different administrations at the at the top level, those things have attendance, priorities have a tendency to change.
Right.
How does that affect us? Because we are so involved in green energy. All right, and so we've got ourselves into this category two. That we're gonna try to do the best we can with green energy, but we also know there's failings there that's gonna happen to us.
You know, that's a great thing to talk about a little bit. Um, with the other, that is, um, something to think about, I guess, for where. What is worth going about is the uh. Intergovernmental relations, okay, as a topic and skill. Because as things change, uh. The, you know, the ability to affect legislation becomes important. To protect those who have invested, that sort of thing. So I guess my point is. Keep in mind that somebody who has some experience in working with state legislators, legislators. And federal legislators, um, the, you know, the. Communities that have challenges and or need special attention uh, can get written into bills, but they don't just happen. Somebody has to be developing relationships so that when you need something, you've got somebody.
Obviously.
Yeah, not only that, but yeah, she could do that, but you know, like the Michigan Minister Leader Matt, they got everybody.
That's right, and you, and you gotta mean that.
Small relationships building with elected officials that can influence you in a positive way. So if you got, not everybody has all these wind turbines and has this revenue issue, you're kind of a, you know, maybe you lobby. Or you, you know, get your state rep or your uh, federal or state rep or. Most representative to talk to other areas of the country that have the same thing, so that you build into some bill. Some protection there. And and that kind of skill level. You know, is a big long term impact if you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it it's the big, you know, in the long run, if you can, you know, gets. And we first have Delta Dental in Bernie Township, beautiful building, we go, oh, that's nice. They don't pay taxes. They don't pay any taxes. Okay, so we brought in guys, you know, into legislation that they're a separate entity.
Got a carve out.
They they pay no tax, they pay no taxes, no property taxes.
Helps community, doesn't it? Helps community out.
Point there is, in terms of looking kind of big picture. Uh, you wanna be thinking about how, okay, we got a problem. We want, I think you want somebody who's gonna look not only small, but in the picture too. What can we do? To make it, you know, to address it.
And you know, just to pile on that. It's important for the administrator to be an educator to the elected officials, like.
Or absolutely.
The board can also carry those messages to their state representatives, but this is a problem for. And I mean, that's why you go to conferences, I guess, and you get to know folks, but. Like this challenge with the appreciation schedules with solar and now they get the pill uh, thing thrown in there. It's administration's job, the management's job to help you understand that, the implications of it, so you can have those conversations with. These folks to maybe have a positive result as well. I mean, but for the administrator needs to be. A bit of a.
Can you go shoot the administrator for help?
Yeah.
You know, help me understand what we can do, what can we do, and you know, educate, you know, issue the information, because elected officials listen to all their elected officials. You know, you're looking out for your community, you know, is that gonna be, is this, it's. It's something that will be a future win here. You can be successful. So, um, how about you, Rogers?
Um, I, both of our, we have one of the most polluted sites in the nation in St. Louis. So it's unfortunately right on the banks of a river, river is notoriously had, we've, how much superfund money's been spent?
Millions.
Hundreds of millions.
Hundreds of millions of dollars on that chemical site. On top of that, um, we have. The Pine River is so full of sediment that when you look at the photographic evidence of it, it's. Changed dramatically. In my lifetime, it's went from a river that was beautiful and wide and. Wonderful for fishing to now it's a bunch of weeds and brush growing and a lot of it, not all of it, but. Um, were you there with me at the? Library when they were talking about it was gonna cost a hundred million dollars to, just to. Take out the impoundment.
And high river and.
Yeah, healthy Pine River. Yeah, Pine River is is in need of some restoration. Yeah, very much so, because it, we have a dam in Alma that this is all built up behind. It's flowing through the dam going, now it's building up behind the dam in Lewis, which is actually a power generation. Generator for the county and that all encompasses, it flows right next to this chemical site that. What's that?
Are they together, Pine River Restoration and the Supersite or?
Are two different.
Two totally different things.
Different.
Totally upper river, two huge challenges and then, you know, we have. You know. There's issues with the Maple River as well.
Then we got issues with our own silly dump that the state decided that we should have.
We have our own county dump that the state of Michigan.
It was also called dump back then and they just, well, let's, let's give it to the county.
Yeah.
Them have.
We have this.
So we've been dealing with that ever since.
Yes.
No, it's.
No, 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 no.
Well, we have no landfill in this.
No, but it means.
Once upon a time.
It's a landfill.
Yeah, we don't have one.
Why is?
Thank God.
The river today is worse than it's ever been.
Certainly.
My first came.
Oh, yeah.
What, why is it green?
You got two source, you got two sources.
A part of sources, sediment, the runoff, the all that.
One is, one is farm fertilization, um, filter strips. The other one is that, that we have so much cattle. We have a lot of runoff that goes right directly into the stream, which causes. Little problems as far as nutrients goes, so we have two problems. One E. coli from humans. And fertilization from cattle.
And that goes into the Great Lakes.
Eventually.
Ultimately, yes.
So that is separate, that's separate from Pine River Restoration?
Well, no.
Those two kind of go hand in hand together. Um, the Pine River Restoration project, which is primarily upstream from the.
The run, the runoff has caused all of the problems with the river.
I see.
Because the, because the hell creates, it creates, creates plant life. Plant life creates. Sludge, which creates, stops the flow of the river.
When life dies, it takes action.
And it just chokes the river off. And so now you have basically little life in there. And the river's not flowing like it should. And it's gonna cost you a hundred million dollars just to dip the one pond out. And that.
Does then you can.
It's gonna do it again.
The big rain events.
Right.
You know, what you used to have this nice deep basin, it's all full of sediment, so now you got.
Brains are crossing.
Yes, there's other issues that are coming on with that.
It's a, it's a Pine River watershed, which starts way up in Isabella County and it comes all the way down this way.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
So no shortage of long term problems.
No, these aren't going away tomorrow.
These aren't going.
Right. And you just try to.
But the, the, the issue is that a lot of these folks, not the supersite, but the Pine, healthy Pine River, they'll come to the county. And seek help.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's where we have to come in.
Right, yeah. Are you gonna help or not, or?
Or what are we gonna do? And and, you know, so.
Um, okay, so, one of the. In terms of maybe wrapping yourself, uh. Go through what we've got and you can tell me here if there's anything you wanna hear. So in the community, which we started off, it's rural, agricultural. They're the, they're the uh, fourth state guy in agricultural production. Uh, questions, geographic center of North Michigan, it's got uh, lots of history and. A long term, long time families, good schools, have no idea of the manufacturers, so you have a college. And you have uh, three lakes, two lakes.
Mm-hmm.
And three rivers and recreational activities and.
And literally thousands of it for recreational, with thousands and thousands of acres of state land.
Oh, you're talking to state land?
Yeah.
Uh, that's the tone, that's how they get paid for them.
Yeah, exactly. Literally half, isn't half a Hamilton, you're Hamilton, isn't half of it state land?
The town, Hamilton Township gets basically.
A chunk of, of uh. Elba that's state land, there's a chunk in Washington. Absolutely. Yep, we have, uh, the Fred Meyer Trail is.
Yeah.
Meyer Trail out of Alma.
We have the US one twenty seven, one that connects Ympoca and Alma, six and a half miles.
And the, the county takes care of the, of the north south one here.
It's part of our Parks and Rec, part of the Parks.
So the other location we have, we're gonna take some of the amongst yourselves in terms of longevity, for. Two years to twenty five or so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you have local government operations through your police departments, one shared contracts with the. Government units, companies work together generally speaking, and you know, and the uh, minerals and the kind of. Uh, master plans coming wide, which is rare, uh, one of.
No, there's like three, three or four counties.
Very few that actually have them.
Okay, uh, that just recently took over the airports, uh, and it's financial. Uh, four hundred seventeen windmills, two solar farms and one third of them coming online. Uh, you have a good park system and I'm gonna get to a listing of villages. I I listed Cal, Castle on AJ and Parks.
Parks, the road patrol has four positions.
Give me a copy of the L forty twenty nine, I'll, I'll give you the sheet.
Yeah, cuz we, we have a.
There's several.
Completed, third is being built, the one in Bethany is being built.
Okay, and there's two over in North Star too.
Yeah, yeah, that's considered one farm, the one that's in Polaris, or the Polaris, which is in. North Star and Washington is one, and then you have the Pine River one, and they're building the one in Bethany.
Okay, so all of the one, so in other words, if the same person owns just one, you just count one? Even though are they in different spots?
Yeah, the, like Polaris is in two townships. She just straddles.
First star.
Road, so yeah, it's on both sides of the road, but it's all contiguous pretty much together.
It's, it's considered one.
They consider it a little object, that one project that was in two different townships, where Pine River stayed all the time. The minor.
It's in the town.
And the one in North Star is considered one?
North Star and Washington Township, one north of Ashley's Township.
Unparked.
That one's called Polaris now. And that's my river, I believe, the name of Pine River still.
So we have a starting segment, in one forty, education, four year degree, in a relevant field. Five years local government management experience, uh, demo. And skills, we have strong leader, vision, visionary, uh, leader forward, uh, airport experience, very helpful. Strong financial background, a good listener and communicator. One who understands technology and has incorporated it from a technology standpoint. Personality wise, uh, um. Let's see, has a test of fortitude, is a strong leader, well rounded, um. Let's see, handles adversity, has a calm demeanor, common, uses common sense. Can be oriented, easy to get along with, not easily swayed, um, easygoing, transparent. And honest. Anything you wanna add to any of those?
Like just tell them what they need to know, not what they wanna hear. I really do, I like that. I, we need to, we need somebody who's willing to do that, that's part of mine.
That's called honest and transparent.
Yeah. Having the intestinal fortitude to do it, cuz not everybody has.
It's okay.
Not everybody has the.
Yeah. And then under challenges in the communities. And we have tax revenue, you know, long range forecast, particularly the uh. Depreciation, uh, pushing the boundaries, Pine River Restoration, it's uh. Um, the runoff problem, and so it's. Uh, from St. Louis Superfund Site, uh, which is not only. Uh, former landfill that they're currently, I heard you say inherited now.
In here, I give it to you.
Yeah.
I don't call that an error. Let's give it back. But inherit something you.
Because you can go after previous owners of the bridge ship. Opportunities, we just have one that some of these could be opportunities to.
Yeah.
Green energy knowledge. Green energy, right?
You know, you're not gonna find many people that have that, if any, but they need to have an interest in, I mean.
Well.
It's, it's an opportunity. I'll say this, though, that, um. Last piece of advice. To me, the biggest traits that administrator and manager needs to have is. They need to be able to ask the right questions. And then know where to go for answers. They don't have to know the answer, they need to know where to go. And they, you think of look and ask the right questions, which is then, which area, where are we gonna go to find that out? To me, those are like.
Goal.
Two of the top things that administrator, cuz you don't have to know everything.
No, but you know where to find it, if you know where to find it.
Since that you're paying somebody to go to a conference is. To be meeting people that know a lot more than they know about certain topics. So that when that topic hits here, they know where to go.
And.
To get information. So it's almost, you know, you hear people talking about now, okay, and it doesn't matter whether it's the herd, the treasure, or whatever. You know, then. Here, you get ears out to what's happening in these other places, so that, hey, that's here. I know who to go to, who to find out what to do that's right and maybe what to avoid. And so, to me, the two things, know what questions to ask. And then know where to go to find the answers. Any questions? Any questions?
I agree with you a hundred percent of your last advice. One of my old college professors liked that, I want another person who can ask the right questions. And then when I was, I became the long-term managers, you know, I was like you gotta know your resources or where to go, you know, so whether Keegan's gonna be in here next week, you know, we're gonna be pumping him on his knowledge of tax base.
Why you just go to Chat GPT, he'll tell you.
Yeah, well, you can, I mean, it doesn't tell you what to avoid.
Yeah, exactly.
And I was just doing the same thing. You can get a start there. But you really wanna know what somebody's experience was handling similar things, what to avoid, what they would have done if they, you know, after it was all done.
AI is gonna do for us.
Yeah. Um, so what you can expect me, uh, here is, I'm gonna take this information and draft up the text for the ad, and then I'm going to send it to Ryan, we'll send it over to you. So you folks will get a chance to look at it, we fully advertise, we're gonna get some pictures. Uh, your sister volunteered to get some pictures in the county, uh, that we can put into this ad. And so we typically run the ad, we sort of, the, um applicants will send it into the league, uh, not here, but if you know of anybody that you come across that you think might either themselves or somebody they know be interested. Uh, have, you've got my card, they can call me, I can call them. However, you want to do it, but more than happy to follow up on it, anybody you know.
So how do you advertise? Is that, in other words, we go around and ask people, or?
No, but we're gonna advertise in the spots, uh, both statewide and nationally that people who are looking for these kind of jobs will look at. So it's both municipal economy, both the Michigan Association of Counties and the National that coin, I think it's called, we'll advertise there, we'll advertise in what's called the International City Management Association, which is actually cities and counties and, and villages too. So we're gonna advertise in, in the four or five state area, we send out, the league sends out, uh, all league members will get to say that that's any kind of a management position, and we do have counties that are part of the league too. So, um, we will, we will, uh, as the applicants go in, I'm gonna review those that need your qualifications to start with, I will call, I'll interview them, spend about an hour on the phone. And if, uh, they have still, I mean, some people uh have some issues in their background that might disqualify them based on something they've done or whatever, but assuming everything is, uh, above board, they are, they say they are, then I'll check references. And then the next time we'll meet is we'll go over the applicant pool that meets all the qualifications, I'll have all the information about them. What are they worth, you know, what kind of education they have, what kind of experience, what's the references say about them? And then you'll decide from that meeting who you want to interview. And then I'll put together the questions, you'll review the questions before we finalize them. And then we'll have a day typically, many, you will choose how many people you want to interview. In general, it runs three to five, but it can be two, it can be six. Uh, you folks will determine that when we sit down, go over it. And then, um, and we'll set up interviews and, and then you'll know your candidates will play a bit of a
There's expected timeframe on
Okay.
To get all this stuff done, when we can expect to start seeing um, these names and, and for us to start taking
So, uh, just, uh, so basically, couple of weeks is gonna take me to put this information together, write out the draft, get it to you to look at.
Just to clarify.
How we get it today or two.
It would be nice if I was here for the meeting on the nineteenth. Of August.
No, they don't have to do this, no, this is all individual.
No, I meant the advertisements, things that you're gonna have them review.
Uh
So you can get them advertised?
Yeah, but I will send that as soon as you, you know, I'm gonna say here, uh, here it is, send it out immediately. Okay, and then it'll, I'm assuming I'll get an email, you look at it for a day or whatever it takes, it's not that long, get any feedback, we go.
Okay.
It's not, it has to be approved.
Answers any question.
Okay.
It doesn't have
I get that, that
No, there's no, I mean, we're
Okay.
I think we put
Just to clarify.
And if you got a suggestion change, you'll give it to me and we'll
Not have any discussions among
So that's two weeks. Okay. The, so there's two weeks plus, let's just say, I mean, say through uh, four weeks that have been advertising, so seven weeks. And then, uh, that is, I don't wait till they all come in. If I see a good candidate, I'm calling, I'm emailing the person, setting up a time to talk and, and starting the process, but well, sometimes what happens is people wait the last minute to apply. And then, you know, you get all these applicants at the end, but hopefully, and I always encourage people to apply. If somebody looks at a job, they're like, get an applicant or don't wait till there's no, nothing good happens when you wait. Um, so that's about six or seven weeks, a couple of weeks, uh, and before that, um, I will be talking to Ryan about setting up the second meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that we'll plug that in, so we're talking seven weeks from now, you're talking mid, late September, somewhere in there. Uh, you know, so vacations are generally over. But then, and, uh, depending on how busy your county board meetings are, we could tack it on the end of the board meeting. You don't know how long you need to go, how long you wanna be. Um, there, there's, uh, it's likely that the review of of resumes and stuff, it will be done in close session. If an applicant requests confidentiality, you go to a call session. So we typically tack that on if it's a regular meeting, you do it after you get the rest of your business. Okay, so, um, then, uh, so then, uh prior to that, if we can set a date, and this is where Ryan is seeing, what's a good day to do interviews? I have a sign, then I can tell the candidates I'm talking to before they're chosen. But say they're in the pool of what I'm gonna say is a recommended, here's a pool that I recommend you choose from. Now, these are the people that you should interview, but uh, I can make sure that if there's an issue with somebody being out of town or whatever, uh, a day is or earlier, I can give them notice, if you chose them, this is the day of the interviews, the better, so we'll try to work on that. So I would say, um, in, into maybe the first, second week of October, we would be looking at interviews. And then depending on how, uh, which, um whatever, okay, so after that, we do a full background, so uh, the full background, meaning we're gonna rehire a third party that checks out their degrees. Uh, all the work experiences they've had, they look around and check to make sure they are, you know, they did all that, any we check their criminal background. And before that, we'll check social media, see if there's or not on social media, like criminal, civil, uh, we do credit cards, all of that. That normally takes about two weeks, and we do that on the one that you choose as person that you wanna go forward and retire.
Okay.
And so, uh, hopefully, it sounds like this is a big task, but I've found that after you listen to, and some of you have been through this, after you listen to say four or five interviews, and ideally at one day, uh, that information doesn't get any better from time. I mean, in terms of remembering, who said what, whatever, so we try to get a decision as a consensus, who do you want to move forward with, so we can do that background, that takes two weeks, so we're talking, you know, now towards the end of October, where you actually make a motion to hire this person officially, I mean, they, they would be offered, given an offer pending a background investigation, but the final contract to hire them would have to be approved by the full department order. And, uh, that I would expect sometime, maybe the third week in October. And then depending on if they're currently not working, they can cover the work right away. Or they gotta get notice, they're gonna do it two weeks, maybe even a month, so it could be middle of November actually before somebody works in the door.
And it doesn't have anything to do on November fifteenth anyhow, so.
No, but he wants to
He told me that, he told me, I got nothing to do.
He really doesn't want
I told him, he says, I don't wanna leave.
Very much so, um, so I just, I mean, I feel bad, cause
But he told me.
You know, our, our word was, we wanted him out of here sooner than that, but
Suggestion. And that is to cut his out, number one. And then let him choose when he comes.
Yeah.
Okay, so if he wants to work Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, this week, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, next week, or whatever, give him the choice based on what's going on.
So basically, if I look at the food cycles, I'll be able to figure out what days he wants.
I mean, if you want him
I'm gonna consult the Farmer's Omena on that.
There you go.
Take the days off that he wants, I will pull in for you. Just let me know.
Jerry, thank you.
Any questions?
I, I wanna apologize if, to, I hope I didn't offend you, as a father of four daughters, trust me. There's girls that have been raised with intestinal fortitude as well. And I didn't word that too eloquently at the beginning, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, I would say watch what you say.
Yeah.
Uh, particularly in a
That's why I said I'm
No, I know, I know.
I didn't know this.
We, we have, uh a decision has come up recently in, in our association meeting, people you know, using terminology that I don't particularly think is appropriate, uh, yours wasn't back.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I apologize, I mean, I should have used intestinal fortitude at the beginning.
Except. So, any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
More German.
For by George, supported by Tim, during articles in favor, say aye.
Aye.